And we've been charged with the task of determining how we are going to move forward and fill that vacancy. I think at this point, what I'll do is just lay out the basic options. If there's individuals from the audience who wish to speak, we'll give them a chance to do that, and then we'll open it up for discussion. By now, most of you probably are pretty familiar with Wisconsin State Statute 17.23, but members of our viewing audience may not be. The options for filling a vacant mayor position include the following: we can appoint someone to fill the vacancy for the rest of the unexpired term, and that would be until April of 2012. That appointee can be any qualified elector. Alternatively, we could order a special election to be held this April 2011. That would be for a one-year term and would be followed by an election again in April of 2012. We could, in that instance where there will be a special election this April, we can appoint someone to fill the position from now until April for that four-month interim. Am I missing any options?
Well, if the council chose not to fill the vacancy, council president, did you go through that?
Correct. We could choose not to fill the vacancy.
If you call a special election.
If we call a special election until April 2012, that's the only caveat. We could not appoint someone for this four-month interim, and the council president could serve for that interim. So really, the two big options that we're looking at are appointing someone for the remaining 16 months or holding a special election this April. Anything you care to add?
No.
Okay. At this point, I would like to open it up to comments from the audience, if there's anyone interested in speaking before we start council debate. Yes? Please give your name and address.
My name is David Smith. I live at 508 Grandview Drive, and I wanted to come down and be a party to observing what is a fairly unique event in the history of the city, and would simply like to express an opinion and also let you know that I'm praying for wisdom for each of you. But personally, those of you that are here have stepped out, entered into the political arena, have run for election, and have been successful. And you're involved in running the affairs of the city. You're very aware of what the issues are. And I would like to just submit that I would like to see the council finalize this decision, and really, I would like to see if there is, in your opinion, someone who's qualified amongst your group and who is also willing to serve as mayor, that you make an appointment from the council. I believe that you're representing a group of people that felt that it was important for you to be a part of governing the city, and I would like to continue to see the city governed by those that have been currently elected. So my encouragement to you is to make a decision. If there is someone amongst yourselves that would like to serve this role, and you all feel is qualified, and I would assume that each of you sitting here would be qualified, that you make that decision. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? All right. Well, my inclination at this point is to direct the council to consider the option for a special election, since that is timely. That's something we should decide today in order that anyone interested in potentially running this spring would have the full filing period available to them. So I think that's probably the first order of business, that we should decide one way or the other if we plan to pursue a special election. And I should note, it's a special election only in that the term will last for one year. There's already going to be an election this spring. There's three council members up. There's a couple of school board members up. So it's not a special election in the sense that it will be a new day, or a different day, or a time that people are not expecting. So with that, I would open it up for discussion regarding a special election.
Move to hold a special election this coming April.
There's a motion to hold a special election this April? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to hold a special election this April? Open for discussion.
Well, my rationale is that the citizens of Hudson deserve to have an elected mayor, not an appointed mayor. We have an interim period here where we're going to possibly have an appointed mayor, and that just can't be avoided. But we need the people of Hudson to have their voices heard as soon as possible on this matter. I think it would be very difficult to support a position of not wanting to hear from the people of Hudson. I do want to hear from the people of Hudson as soon as possible. It's their right to vote for their mayor.
And I agree with Mr. Smith from the audience that, you know, any one of us could step up and take on that role. I think we all have a lot of experience in that. I would like to, whoever's in that role after April, have the support of the constituents that we had the debates, we've had the time, people to step forward and say they're willing to take on that role, and have the conversation with the public. So I think, and somebody who's elected this spring, granted, they'd have to be reelected next spring, but it also gives you that period of time to say, yep, we're going in the right direction.
I've given thought to this, and, you know, I do agree, we were put in these positions to make tough decisions. Under the statute of Wisconsin State Statute 17.23, we have that charge as council members to make the decision within our group. And for continuity's sake, I won't support a special election or election in April. I would rather fill the term, so I'll be voting no.
I agree with Randy, actually. I believe that the best thing to do for the city right now is to ensure continuity, and I think that there's, I think that there is many, any one of us here sitting on council right now understand the different complexities of the city right now, what issues that we have on the table that haven't yet been resolved. I think that there is a need to continue forward with someone who is already knowledgeable as to the needs of the city. And I think one of the biggest concerns of the taxpayers right now in the city is to keep their taxes low while offering good service to the city. And I think that we can do that with an appointment of a mayor right now.
Ellen, do you have anything to?
It's a hard issue. I think it's, I understand where Scott and Lee are coming from on this. Kind of looks like it's 2-2 at this point. I'd probably go for an appointment, I think, for a lot of the reasons that Mary stated. Got some things going on, and I have no problem with the fact that Lori, as interim president or council mayor, would do a fine job. I think we could continue to move forward by possibly appointing someone here today. So I'd probably be voting no.
I would like to just springboard off something Mary said. We are talking about leadership of the city here, but to say that the mayor is the leader of the city is a misreading of our city charter. We six members here are the leaders of the city. We were elected to lead the city. The mayor has no power whatsoever. The mayor can't vote. The mayor can't hire. The mayor can't fire the mayor, contrary to all the things we may have heard in recent years. Mayor can't even make a committee appointment without the city council members' approval. We are the leaders of the city, and to take one of our leaders and put them into a non-voting role, I think, is an abrogation of the responsibility. I believe that we need to have an election as soon as possible and have that situation, if that's what happens, is if we take one of our members, have that last as short a period of time as possible.
I'd like to make one minor correction, and then I'd like to state my position. The mayor can vote. And the mayor has voted to break a tie.
To break a tie.
And the mayor does have veto power.
Except, as you know, that's just an ability for the mayor to express an opinion if there is no tie. To override a veto, any decision by the council has a minimum of four votes, maybe five, maybe six. But if the mayor vetoes the council's decision, it takes only four of those voting members to override that veto instantly.
I just think it was a slight mischaracterization. I think the role of the mayor is an important one, and it is a very, has a significant role in leadership.
Didn't say it didn't. Just can't vote, has no power.
So if I could state my position on the issue, so now I'm going to step into my councilperson role. And I sent all of you a letter about 10 days ago outlining my position, and I agree with Ellen, it's difficult. But the fact that we're given options by the state statute says that either would be valid. I don't think we should mischaracterize one as being invalid and usurping the will of the voter. I don't think that's the case at all. My position in not supporting a spring election is simple. We look at the possibility of having up to four different people in the role of mayor in a period of 16 months. You know, we can say that's not a big deal, but I don't know how many of us would like to have, you know, have four different bosses in 16 months.
Mischaracterization. The mayor's not our boss. We're his boss.
If I could finish.
Sure.
My concern with having four different people in that position, simply, I think it's obvious, it would lead to a lack of leadership, kind of an unsteadiness. I think there'd be a tenuous nature to anyone's direction for the city, because it would be for four months, it would be for 12 months, and potentially another election next spring. If we could have an election this spring that would start a two-year term, I don't think anyone here would disagree for a moment. So it's, and that's the reason I believe they do give this as an option. The appointment for the rest of the unexpired term is to provide some continuity. I don't think it's, we're going beyond the will of the voter to do that. It's within the state statute. Ideally, we wouldn't be in this position at all, and we wouldn't be making this decision. But fortunately, we had an excellent mayor who was elected to the state assembly, and so here we are. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Lee?
Well, I'm really confused, because we were all elected to a position by the people in our districts to say, we want you to represent us. Perfect. I still understand, I hear the arguments, but I don't understand why we wouldn't provide the opportunity for someone to come forward and say, I'm interested in being mayor, and run for mayor. I don't, so the argument of continuity, Devon's the city administrator, he runs the city. We help with the decision points along the way, and that's our role, to make sure that we're representing the people. I really don't understand why we wouldn't give our electorate the opportunity. And if, a mayor that's elected this spring will serve one term, will then be given the opportunity to run again.
They'll serve one year.
Yeah, one year, April, April. So, sorry, one year, correct, thank you. And if after one year, you know, a lot of things are changing right now in the economy and everything else. We have laid out a track record over the last three years of how we want to run this city. A new mayor comes in, gets a chance for a year to say, this is the direction, the plan, and then next spring, if the citizens don't like where we're going, they get a chance to say, we don't like where you're going. I don't really see a problem with having somebody elected this spring, show what they can do, and be elected again and say, yeah, okay, let's keep you on. Where's the drawback? We have a city administrator who's running the city. We have the six council members who are making the decisions we need to make. I think we have consistency. And granted, the mayor is an important position. He or she is a person that the people come to and ask questions of, and that, as they do of us. So I'm just having a real hard time with this. Why wouldn't we, what's the drawback in giving the citizens the opportunity to vote on a mayor?
First, I understand that it's a weak meral system. I didn't mean to imply that I didn't understand it. I think, Lee, to respond to you too, I have been thinking about this situation since our, since Mayor Knutson decided to run for state assembly. I think it's been on my mind probably the longest, I don't know, maybe everybody's been thinking about it, but it has not weighed, this has weighed heavily on my mind for months. I've actually lost sleep over trying to make the decision, because you make valid points, and there's valid points towards an appointment. I think there's valid points on both ends of the spectrum, on pro cons lists. I've even done research what other cities have done. And, I mean, I think if you look at the different levels of government, you can go as high as a vice president of the United States when Joe Biden was elected vice president, the same year he also won a senate seat. What did that state do? They appointed his seat to fill out his term. I mean, in many situations, the seat is appointed. I don't think that's necessarily taking the vote away from the electorate. I mean, some will argue it is, and I don't, in a lot of, they have very valid points, but some would also say that history has proven that we were, this governing body right now was elected to sit in these seats, and we were asked to make tough decisions like this, you know? Someone said to me, you know, we're a republic, not a democracy. And those words have resonated in my mind for quite a while. And I think that we can, we have the ability to make a good decision here, to continue what needs to be done to move forward. And as far as the next year, the budget is set for the next year. So we've made some of the big decisions that need to be made to maintain, you know, a well-run city. So I don't necessarily think it's unfair. I think it might be unfair to do something similar to what Council President Bernard is saying, that it's just a staggered position for the next, you know, 16 months, or at least for the next five months, four to five months. So.
Well, I agree with you that we are certainly capable of making an appointment. My question is, I don't see the reason why, since we're already having an election, that we can't also let the people say, we agree with this appointment, we're going to continue to support it, or we're going to, whoever runs for mayor, fill that position. So I don't disagree with you, but I don't see the reason why we wouldn't choose to have a real mayoral run this spring.
Anything else anyone would like to add?
Final comment?
Mm-hmm.
I totally agree with the discussion about continuity. I believe that the correct way to deal with that is to keep all six electors on this council continuing in their roles, because that's what they're elected to do, and they have the knowledge and history on this. I also believe that there is no way, as an elected official, I'm ever going to say this to the people of Hudson, I don't want to hear from you. And that's what appointing someone for a 17-month period and not allowing the electors of Hudson to vote this April is saying. It's plain and simple. I want to hear from them.
Can I take this just a step further? Can you tell me if I can't? I know you will.
Well, you can have a discussion unless someone wants to go.
Then I guess what I would like to ask is, what would you propose we do in the interim?
Well, you've got several choices. We've only been discussing one so far, assuming that we were to have an election in the springtime. There are people on this board and outside of this board who are well-qualified to run a meeting. That is, by the way, the basic job of the mayor is to run, is to facilitate these meetings. By our city charter, the mayor facilitates these meetings and the meetings of the planned commission end of duties, except that in case of a citywide emergency, the mayor also works with the civil defense director to coordinate efforts to alleviate whatever that emergency may be. That's the end of the powers of the mayor. I believe that we should have an elected mayor, not an appointed mayor. Sometimes you get into an appointment situation. My first term on this council was as an appointment, but it was only, it was the month of December, 10 years ago. It was only a four- or five-month period, at which time people were able to elect a representative. I think we ought to keep the representatives in their place for each district and go outside. I can tell you that we have an experienced person, elected mayor several times over, who I've talked to recently, had to do a little persuading, but he has agreed to step in and run the meetings and allow the council members to make the decisions on their own with whatever guidance of history that he can have, and he has a ton of it. And we could have him in place by the end of this meeting today. I believe that we could have a mayor in any event by our meeting of next week. There will be continuity, but the most important thing is to not disturb the continuity of this council, because we are the people who make the decisions, not the mayor. That's it.
I'll move to close the debate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing debate? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table to hold a spring election this April. All in favor, and I do have to tell you, I'll be voting as a councilperson. All in favor of the motion for a special election? Vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign?
No.
No.
I'll move, we, under Wisconsin Statute 17.23, appoint Alan Birchall mayor for the residue, the unexpired term till April 2012.
There's a motion to appoint Alan Birchall for the next 16 months? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second for that appointment? Discussion.
In all fairness of the continuity that every one of us brought up today, Alan is one that can sit in that chair and continue driving the car in the right direction. And at the same time, when we appoint an alderperson, or if we decide not to, they would have a year to learn what we're looking for, or not looking for, but what issues are in front of us, so they can learn during that term, the unexpired term of Al Birchall, they can learn more, sitting in that chair, and learn which direction we're going. And I think Al's got the same direction as all of us do, and I think that's the safest thing to do right now.
And just to note, District 6 is up for reelection.
Correct.
This spring. So any appointment would be for four months, and there would be a regular election. I mean, papers are available now.
December 1st.
Right.
I will repeat my position, and this is no reflection on Alan or anyone here on this council. I believe our appointed interim mayor should be someone from outside the council, because under this process, and there's nothing wrong with Randy's motion, and certainly nothing wrong with Alan presiding for the interim period, but we are taking an experienced person and putting him in a position where he doesn't have a vote anymore. We'll be replacing him with a person who has no experience on the council, I would assume.
Okay, with that logic, the argument before was that these positions hold more power than the mayoral position. So I think we're actually allowing parts of the city to have a little more power than before, and that's not coming out how I'm thinking it, so what's new? But, so, I'll, I've lost my train of thought.
It's early. That's okay.
It is early. So I just think that, you know, I totally lost my train of thought. It's useless.
Can I ask at this point if you'd be willing to serve?
I would be, yes, I'd be willing to do it. I think it's, again, a temporary position as far until November, or till April of 2012. At that time, whether or not I'd be interested in running for the position, I guess we'd make determination at that time on whether or not anybody, if I want to continue on, or the electorate wanted me to continue on. So yes, I would accept it.
I remember what I was going to say. This past year, or since I've been on council at least, I, the past year too, because I was in the gallery watching, there was, it's been said that this previous mayor has broken more tie-breaking votes. I don't know if that's a true fact or not.
Well, since I've been here, yes.
He's saying it is, so we'll go with that. So in essence, our mayor, our next mayor is going to be sitting in a very powerful position, because we're going to have, might have continued many tie-breaking votes, which means he has casted many votes in the last year. So I don't look at it as powerless as you're portraying it to be.
Can I respond?
Sure.
De facto, the character of the council's going to change by Alan moving out of his seat. So we don't know what's going to happen, and I would suspect that we may not have. It's just as easy to believe we won't have any tie-breaking votes as that we will have some. We have an unknown by doing this. You're stepping off into the unknown.
Right. The character could change in April with three councilpersons, too. We don't know what's going to happen in April.
One we know for certain is that for 17 months, we will have two unelected people making decisions about the city.
How's that?
Just have for one.
Just one.
Because his is only up till.
Oh, that's right. Excuse me. His is up, never mind.
Yeah. And it's, I mean, historically, there've been many appointments to the position of alderman. Many.
Now, I have, can I ask a question on that? Are we required then to appoint an alderperson, or does that seat stay open until April 2012 if this were to pass?
Well, you're authorized to appoint. If you can appoint to fill a vacancy, you should appoint, but given that that term is up in April, it's a relatively temporary vacancy, and I think if the council chose to, it could have the council president serve.
The last time was, there was a seat that vacated in February when Ron Torrey resigned, and that, because it was February to April, they chose not to fill it. This is December to April, so it's a little bit different.
Lee, you haven't spoken.
Well, I still restate my position. I think that we should have a spring election, but we turned that down. Because if it's a spring election, then you could confirm any appointment you made to mayor.
Moves to close debate.
Is there a second? I'll second. All in favor of closing debate? Say aye.
Aye.
We have a question on the table. Motion and a second to appoint Al Birchall from District 6 for the remainder of the mayoral term until April 2012. All in favor, vote aye. And I will be voting as an alderperson. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, and this is no reflection on Alan at all.
Okay. I heard four, two. And the motion will carry. This is two-thirds of the council. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, you want to discuss?
Yeah.
Well, you can, you can take the.
I'll wait until after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Let's consider options for the possible, filling the possible vacancy, it's no longer possible, it is actual. We need to consider options for filling the vacancy in District Six, and I'll open the, we have a discussion.
Move to appoint his successor in that position as soon as possible.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
What's the process?
Regarding the appointment process?
There is no process laid out in statute. The council has in the past published notice that this vacancy exists in this district and taken letters of interest, those types of things, applications basically, and then conducted an interview process with questions, and then made a decision based on that process. That's what the council's done in the past.
So could we set a timetable at this point?
Sure, yep. I think you should probably vote on the motion, just that you want it, if you want it filled, and then discuss the procedure and the mechanics of that.
Okay. All in favor of the position being filled by appointment, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, so we can go ahead and discuss?
Yes.
Timing? Okay.
And process.
Okay. I'll open it up, I have my own thoughts, but.
Well, Randy and I have both gone through this process before, and I think we ought to repeat that process. If that, you know, is okay with you, and that's essentially, we set a date for, either prior to a regular meeting, and that's the way it worked with me, was before a regular meeting, and I would suggest that that be our second meeting in December. Now, sometimes we don't have a second meeting in December. We have an acting mayor here, do you care to declare ahead of time whether you want a second meeting in December?
Normally, it's been dependent on if there's anything coming from the committees. If there isn't, then we've just had the finance committee meet to approve the vouchers that will get payments.
And this second meeting is not very close to Christmas this year.
I prefer that we have that, so that we can have someone appointed, or at least have the opportunity to appoint someone.
So I would move that prior, at some hour prior to our second meeting in December, we interview those desiring to be appointed to fill the sixth district seat, and that we publicize that. Jan was here a second ago, and she can have the.
I believe we can still get it in this week.
If by noon today, yeah, we can get it in the paper today.
I think we should put it on our website also.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll put in all the regular things, but I believe we can get it in the paper this week, yeah.
Yeah, we can.
And are you suggesting a committee of the whole?
Absolutely.
When would you like them back by, should we say, the Thursday before, so that we're not getting them at the last minute on Friday?
Right, good idea.
All right.
Need a second to my motion. Did I get one?
Mary seconded it.
Oh, thank you.
So we take the applications and do everything the same day? Is that how that works?
The applications will come in, they'll be given to you in your council packets, and then those individuals will be invited to come to whatever time we set.
And that Monday night, we'll meet a little early and interview them, and the way it's worked in the past is we interview all of them at the same time.
Okay.
I'm going to say all, I don't know how many applicants we're going to have, but whoever does apply.
And it's possible we could move finance up that night earlier and have the interviews right prior to city council.
You should usually schedule about an hour.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.